What'd you say?
Yes.
If it doesn't start working, I'm gonna call you up. You realize that, right?
Yeah, let's go.
Welcome to the Uwena School District Board Special Business Meeting for Capital Outlay. Today is February 26, 2025. The meeting is being held at 826 South 1500 East Naples, Utah. Present at the meeting is Board President Dave Shivers, Vice President Tanya McKee, Robin McClellan, Todd Massey, Denise Maynard, Superintendent Dr. Rick Woodford, and myself, Troy Timothy, Business Administrator. The time is 4:02 PM.
Welcome, everybody. We're glad to be here. They, um, I know there's been a lot of long hours put in by the Finance Department to get ready for tonight, so I'm sure that they'll be glad when this night's behind them. I've lied to you guys for about four years about every other month it's Robin McClellan's birthday, but I'm not lying to you tonight. Today is Robin's birthday. Happy birthday! I tell you how old she is, 'cause I think we're the same age, but I'm not gonna do that. Let's see. Our reverence will be taught by Todd, a board member, and our Pledge of Allegiance by Donnie.
Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful for the opportunity which we have to be here this day. We're grateful for the facilities that we have. We're grateful for, uh, the opportunity we have to serve on the board and to enhance in some way our schools and our district. And we pray that as we do so, that we may be mindful of our students, that we may be mindful of our staff, and all those that put the effort into doing the things they do, that we may continue to progress, uh, and, and increase in our abilities to do those things which we have set goals to do. We're grateful again for each of those individuals that take the time to be here this evening, that care about our district, and may blessings be with us, we pray this night, and do so in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Everybody please rise and hold in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shauna, Shauna, would you check for future input?
Thank you. Nobody has signed up in person for, um, input. The superintendent's gonna check online to make sure that we don't miss something, so we'll give him just a minute.
Board members, we do not have any, uh, community input online.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Woodford. As we get ready to, before I turn the time over to, um, Troy Timothy, our Business Administrator, and he'll lead us through the capital outlay requests, this is an easy meeting that we get to move in and ask in different people questions. We, we need to come to the mic if somebody asks you a question and state your name, and then answer the questions, and that way it's on the recording and, and it keeps us legal and keeps me out of trouble. So with that, Troy.
All right.
The night is yours.
Thank you, President Shivers. Each year, the board is asked to preliminarily approve our capital outlay requests made by district administrators as part of the budget process. This is done to, this is done to allow, uh, district administrators to plan and prepare to begin spending and completing capital project as early as July 1st of the following fiscal year. The actual approval of such projects and allocation of funds to pay for the same occurs in June, when the board adopts its budget for the next fiscal year. I, um, I appreciate the opportunity to be here today to talk about, uh, the work of so many that are present at this meeting today. I joined this process about halfway through, uh, the work being completed, and I missed a lot of the heavy lifting, to be honest. Our process typically for, for our annual, uh, capital outlay budget preparation begins in November, when, uh, Kim Barnhurst, who was at the time our, uh, interim Business Administrator, sent out a survey to all the facility managers in the district to gather, uh, needs for, uh, the upcoming year. In December, Kim and Donnie Laws, our, our Maintenance Coordinator, visited these facilities to, um, determine, uh, the true capital, the true facility needs, and to work with the, the administrators on what they felt were the, the highest of priorities. In January, right, the week I started, uh, we had a capital meeting, and we sat down with the coordinators, myself, uh, Kim, and we discussed everything that was submitted. We were able to, um, then prioritize based on two criteria. First being a physical need for that facility. There may be a roof that needs to be replaced. There might be, uh, a boiler or an HVAC system or something major in the school. Uh, there might be legislated or needed safety, uh, requirements that we need to make sure that we're taking care of in our facilities. We might need to replace, um, carpeting or instructional items like whiteboards in schools. So we've got several different things that are competing for these dollars. We've been on a, a series of large capital spends over the past several years. We are getting a new preschool. We've, we've done some good work with the, uh, security and safety of our schools with the, the vestibule program. We have a, a teen center at the high school that is currently being, uh, built, and so, and we had an ag building that was constructed, so several projects over the last few years. And we are now at the point where we need to focus on maintaining those facilities and preparing and saving for future needs of our, of our facilities in our district. It's a never-ending cycle. I would personally like to thank, though, during this process, um, our school principals who have been very generous with their time working with us. I'd like to thank Kim Barnhurst for spearheading this, Kelly Wilson for her work on the, um, Capital Committee, and our district coordinators. Donnie Laws has been our right-hand man through this process, and we really appreciate the work Donnie's doing. Kent Mansfield, Mark Rich, Sherri Hardman, and Mindy Merrill, for all their hard work that they've put on, put in on the, on the budget, uh, before I ever joined the district and since then. We've gone back and forth on many of these items, and the process has produced a better product. I'd also like to thank the superintendent, President Shivers, Vice President McKee, and, uh, Board Member Todd Massey for their valuable input and insights during the Finance and Facilities Committees' meetings this past month, because they offered some good perspective and some good information that helped us to fine-tune our, our lists a little bit better. So with that, I'd like to start with our presentation. I'm gonna go over two things today. I'm gonna first go through a PowerPoint deck, and then I'm gonna present, uh, an Excel list that has all of our projects listed for the upcoming year that we can, we can talk about. So I'll go through the Excel deck first. I'd like to start, I have a picture of a road here. I'm trying to create a vision of a horizon that we're, we're moving towards, because this is a long-term view when we talk about, uh, investment in our facilities. We're gonna talk today about our next five years, what that might look like, with spend by year, and also spend by type, and we will also take a look at what the 20-year horizon looks like for capital spend. After that, we will go over some, uh, building overviews, uh, for our facilities, and also we'll talk a little bit about our, our role at versus capacity. So with that, I'm gonna jump, uh, onto our first slide, where we talk about our, our five-year capital spend projection. When I go through this, I'm, I'm going to, um, first talk about what, what our next five years looks like. So if you look at that graph, we, we are, we are looking at our spend over the next five years, and we're looking at this in 2025 dollars. I want to be very clear about that. This is not inflation-adjusted. I'll talk about this a little bit later, but we don't have a crystal ball when it comes to inflation. It has spiked significantly, uh, in the, for prior five years, and we don't know if we're gonna be growing at 1% or 4%. Actually, Kim and I met with a, uh, an investment advisor today, and he gave us some pretty good economic information, and even they, even the experts are struggling with this, but they're, they're, um, all over the place with it right now. So what we wanna do, though, is kind of level-set what, what our future needs are in today's dollars. So if you look at this, I've got it broken down by school facilities, um, and these are the, these are the big facilities in our district, and on this, on this presentation, I've highlighted some items. Any facility that's over $5 million over the next five years, I've highlighted in yellow just to, just to make it jump out. We have three such facilities. Eagle View, uh, is gonna be about $5.7 million roughly. UMS, $12.8 million, and Vernal Middle School, $5.1 million. I've also highlighted in red anything over a million dollars, just to catch your eye. Uh, we, so we have schools every year that are gonna have, with the exception of 2029, over, there's, there's gonna be at least one school that has over a million dollars worth of capital needs that need to go into it. Like I said, this is, this is as of today, and this, this data that we use to, to drive these capital needs comes out of our SchoolDude, uh, great name, uh, SchoolDude, uh, software. It's updated and maintained by our Maintenance Department, Donnie Laws. We, when we add, or when we, when we update major items, it gets updated in our software, and it tracks it, and there's a useful life schedule. Some, some items are 10 years, some 15, some 20, some 40. Uh, these are the big-ticket items: roofs, carpeting, uh, HVAC systems, asphalt paving, big, big items in the schools. We, we track the typical depreciation on the, or deprecation, I guess, on those, on those assets. It's something that we have to be on top of, and it, things can vary. We've been very fortunate this year. For instance, we've had great weather. Our roofs probably haven't taken the beating that they would on a normal year, but a couple years ago, when we received a few feet of snow, it was definitely harder on our roofs. So we can never predict what the future holds. It's a, you know, like, I'm gonna go back to the crystal ball theme time and time again, but this is what we know today. I'm still talking about the next five years, but this gives you a more in-depth look at our, at each year, what's really driving this. There are, there are spend types that are very prevalent here. I wanted to call a few things out. Specifically, I'd like to talk a little bit about, um, the big, the big green, if you look at those bar charts, the big green bar, that is HVAC systems, and that's, that's gonna be our biggest expense over the next five years. In the year 2028, at Uwena Middle School alone, we have an air handler system that's up, that's up for replacement, $8.9 million. We have a boiler at Mazur that's gonna give you $800,000. We've got boilers at Naples that same year, eight million, or $800,000. And then we have some years that are a little more simple, like in 2026, for instance, we are replacing HVAC controls at both Davis and La Pointe. That's just about $300,000 a school to do all the HVAC controls for one school, for one elementary school, to give you an idea of what these things cost. We've also got some big-ticket items, I'm calling these big-ticket, anything over 100K. When I look at things that I didn't even realize this before I started this job, but like lunch tables, uh, La Pointe needs to have some lunch table, um, improvements. We're gonna probably do that next year. It's gonna cost around $100,000 to do the lunch tables, just at La Pointe. We've, we've been able to extend the life of many of these things by purchasing replacement parts and doing things, but at some point, you have to actually replace the full table. Roofs are a big one. We've got some, uh, different roofs that are going on. In 2026, at Uwena High School, we have, we're replacing the roof over the classroom wing. That's about $1.3 million for just the wing at Uwena High School over the classrooms. That's not the entire school. We've been working on it for the last few years, actually, doing little sections at a time. And so, looking back to that slide that I talked to you about, the timing, where you saw some spikes, we can be more creative, probably. This is just what's based on the SchoolDude schedule. We can go in and say, "Okay, well, we've got a roof, maybe we could do half this year, half the next year." Or maybe we go in and evaluate, um, the carpet in an auditorium and realize it's not that worn, maybe we could push it down the road a year or two. And these are not choices that are gonna jeopardize our students' quality of education, or, or put ourselves in an unsafe situation or anything like that, but it's just being smart with how we spend our money, so that we don't have a huge spike one year and then very little the next year. We can, we can maintain a steadier level of spend, which is good for us from a cash flow standpoint, because we're bringing in revenues to our district every single year. We don't wanna spend our entire savings in one year, when we could spread it out over two or three years, the very same thing. So we've got to be a little bit strategic, and we can talk about that, uh, a little further into this as well, but I, I kinda wanna put those thoughts into your mind about how we would want to, um, maybe strategically think about this. These will be topics for discussion in our Facilities Committee, our Finance Committee, and in general board meetings, and so I just wanna set the table and prepare ourselves for what the, what the, the horizon's starting to look like for us. We've even got things at our schools, for instance, in, um, you know, athletics facilities. We've, we've got, uh, UHS, we've gotta replace the interior bleachers for $300,000 in a couple of years. Uh, we've got, uh, a couple of, we've got the training facility, we've got the, the turf farm at the middle school. These, these all, will all require some upkeep over, over the coming years. Not necessarily the next five years, but we do have some, some things that are built into the 20-year forecast for those guys. So does anybody have any questions about the five-year right now? Okay. Jump to the next slide, then. So this is a look at 20 years. Now, like I said before, I wanna be very clear, this is in 20, 25 dollars. This is not accounting for inflation. If we just, if we were to do all these things today, in today's money, that would be required over the next 20 years, based off of our useful life schedule, we're talking about $184 million. That's a tremendous amount of money. It's a lot more money than we have saved up right now. And so these are things to think about, and I'll talk about this on the next slide. We need to start thinking ahead. What's, what are we going to do to plan and prepare for these things? Once we get out of the next five years, we'll have some years where we're about $10 to $12 million a year, uh, in today's money for facilities, and there's some other years that are smaller, so we can, we can do things to smooth that out. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of, uh, there, there are a lot of levers that we can pull here. This is not a set in stone, defined, this is just based off of our useful life schedule. But we have needs. We are, for, for the middle, for the high school, which is our biggest need, $36.2 million. Middle schools are both in the twenties. UMS is almost $27 million. The elementary schools are, are ranged from nine and a half to $16.4 million. So we have some, some money to, we, we'll need to be invested in these, in these facilities to keep them, you know, safe, functional, and, and attractive, and this is not, this is not added a bunch of bells and whistles, this is just the basic stuff. Anybody have questions about the 20-year? So this is where we need to start thinking, and we don't have to answer these questions today. We, but this is something for our board and, and those here in the room are, are coordinators and directors and principals. We've got some things to think about over the long term. First of all, inflation, where's it going? I did some back-of-the-envelope calculations, and I might, I didn't put it in my presentation, because I don't wanna put something out there that is not verifiable and, and true as of today, but we've got, um, if I can find my sheets here. At 2% inflation, 2%, which is what, that's the, that's the ideal that our, that our Fed is planning in their economic data, at 2%, we would, um, over the next five years, we would spend, instead of $35.7 million, we would spend $37.6 million. That's about $1,008,000, but that could cost us extra on top of that, on top of that, just based off of inflation. That's over, that's over five years, and this is, this is using a, uh, time value of money, um, formula that, that compounds every year. So it's kinda like if you put a bunch of money on your credit card at 10% interest, well, you don't make any payments on it, well, next year, you're gonna pay 10% off of, off of, say it's $1,000, you pay, you pay 10% off of $1,100. And the next year, we grow 10% off of, of, uh, $1,021. It, it just keeps compounding, and that's, that's what's going on here with the inflation. If we jumped up to 4%, uh, instead of being 35.7, it would be 30, uh, 39.4, so that's a $3.7 million increase. Realistically, over the past 25 years, based off of research, it's been around 3% to 3.25% inflation, and that's, that's looking back into the, to the millennium, basically, and, that would be about an extra $2.7 million on top of what I showed you for five years. So something to plan for and think about. The 20-year is even scarier, uh, to be honest. I'm not gonna lie to you, that $184.2 million at 2% would turn into $230 million. At 4%, that would turn into $289 million. That's over $100 million higher. So just to think about what our money's doing, because, think about it this way in financial terms, a dollar today is worth more than a dollar in the future. That's, that's Finance 101. A dollar today is worth more than, a, a dollar will be in the future, so there are other things to consider as well. We are, in the future, our, our revenues will grow as well. So I don't wanna freak you out, thinking we have to pay all these things ba, based off of today's, uh, revenue plans. So that leads me to my next point, future funding requirements. How do we pay for these needs? I think that there are several things that could be done. We're already starting to do them, we're starting to be smart and tactical about how we spend our money. We don't want to, we need to always, when we think about big purchases and big-ticket items, think about wants versus needs. We want to make sure, like I said before, we are, we are protecting a quality education for our students, we are protecting our facility investments, because they are enormous, we are being responsible with the public's money, and we are, um, making sure that we are strategically spending money on the right things. So that jumps to the next two points. We've already seen, and it's been, has, has been presented, we are entering a period in the state of Utah and in our own district of declining enrollment. It's just a fact of life, people are having fewer children, um, birth rates are slowing. So what is that gonna do to our district over the next 20 years? And then facility strategies. I don't have a crystal ball here, but does public education look the same in 20 years that it looks today? Do we have the same needs for the exact same setup that we do today in 20 years from now? So it's something to think about and to consider as we strategically plan how we're gonna spend our money in the future. So with that, I'm gonna jump over, and I'm gonna just go through each of our schools fairly quickly, but I want, I want everybody to kinda get an idea of where we're at with each school. Ashley Elementary, uh, so it was rebuilt in, uh, 2011, uh, it's just about 90,000 square feet, uh, 750 enrollment capacity. So as you can see, October 23 to October 24, we've had a little bit of an enrollment decline, 67% of capacity to 4, to 59%. And I'll jump over to the next slide. Davis Elementary, uh, rebuilt in 2011, uh, 64,000 square feet roughly, uh, capacity of 775 students. We've actually maintained fairly steady at Davis. In fact, we gained four students year over year, so we're basically flat. We've actually maintained fairly steady at Davis. In fact, we gained four students year over year. So, we're basically flat. Discovery Elementary. Built in 1981, rebuilt in 2011. I was, I started first grade in 1981 at Discovery Elementary, so I saw it brand new. 66,000 square feet, 700 enrollment capacity. We are just about capped out at Discovery, 675, 656 in, in 2024. So, we are, we are pretty close to that 700. I realize that some of that's also being driven by the dual-language immersion program that's there, so it's a, it's a popular choice for our students here in the district. Eagleview Elementary, built in 2010. 94,000 square feet, 500 enrollment capacity. This is a K through 8. It's gone from 292 in '23 to 278 in '24, so it's about 56% capacity right now. La Pointe Elementary, rebuilt in 2011. 54,000 square feet, 450 capacity. It's at 147 enrollment in October '24, which is about a 33% enrollment capacity. Mazur Elementary, built in 2008. 83,000 square feet, 473 students enrolled in 2024. 63% capacity. It's a, it's a 68-student decline year over year from '23. Naples Elementary. Built in 2008, 83,000 square feet, 775 student capacity. It's right now at 473 students as of October, 63% capacity. UNTA Middle School, built in 2006. 165,000, well, rebuilt in 2006, built originally in 1955. That's important to note when you look at the cost that we're going to have to put into it. 165,000 square feet, 850 enrollment capacity. This October, we were at 579, which is about 68%. It's declined a little bit. I'd like to point out the high quality of this photograph taken by Jeff Lysick yesterday with the wind blowing. That looks awesome, but anyway. Vernal Middle School. Rebuilt in 2009. 137,000 square feet, 900 student capacity. We are pretty full there, actually. 844 students in October, 94%. We actually gained some enrollment there year over year. And UNTA High School, originally built 1987, rebuilt 2014 or remodeled. 254,000 square feet, enrollment capacity of 2,300. Enrollment's been relatively flat there. We lost 20 students year over year. We are, as we know, we are kind of in a bubble of students there in the high school right now. We know that those numbers are expected to decline a little bit over the next few years. But we're at about 80% right now. And we've got Ashley Valley Education Center, AVEC, UNTA. 287 students, 37 on UNTA. 13,000 square feet. It was, it was remodeled in 2017. I just wanted to show you our maintenance facility, built in 1955. Almost 20,000 square feet. This is interesting to note because in the 20-year model, there's, there's about a million and a half dollars of, of money projected to, to keep this place up. So, strategically thinking down the road, this is something we keep. You know, this is one of those things that we, we put on our list. And the child nutrition building, and I apologize, I don't, I think it looks a little better. They've been doing a lot of work over there, but this is an old picture, but. It's about 13,000 square feet. And I don't know what year it was built. I tried to find that and I couldn't find it, so apologies. But I wanted to summarize these things. I've, I've got a slide that summarizes what I just talked about. I did do a year-over-year change, though. Some, some interesting statistics. Ashley lost about 12.5% year-over-year in students. Mazer, just about exactly the same, 12.6. We did gain, like I said, in VMS. We, we gained a little bit in Davis. Everybody else has lost a little bit. So, this kind of summarizes everything that we just talked about. Does anybody have questions about it that we just talked about?
President, you mind if I just share some, some thoughts? You know, hard, hard to know what enrollment's going to look like over the next five or 10 years. We have a 20-year plan in place that, that addresses some options if we were to have an increase in student enrollment. And we started having conversations about options if we decline in, in enrollment. And it's interesting because the fact that we have so much capacity in our elementary schools, declining enrollment or increasing enrollment might include an option of moving sixth graders back to the elementary schools. What that would do is that would, that would potentially increase, right, increase the capacity in our elementary schools across the board. And depending on what happens, our oldest school is, is UNTA Middle School. If, if enrollment continues to decline, one option would be to go to one middle school, a one-middle-school model. And so, the board needs to be thinking about that because we're going to have to make some decisions about, man, do, do we really, are we going to replace HVAC systems and all of that in, in a school that potentially could be closed in, in the next five to 10 years? We, you know, we, we just have a lot to consider moving forward. The good news is, is if we are strategic and we plan ahead, we've got really good options either way, whether we increase or decrease in student enrollment. Okay?
Yeah. Thank you, Superintendent. Any other, any questions about anything that we've talked about thus far? Are we good?
So, the capacity of the UNTA High School, 2,300, does that include the Ag Building?
No, that does not.
That does not.
It does not.
And that's actually increased our capacity a little more at the high school.
That's what I was thinking. We added a couple of extra classrooms there to increase that by 90 or whatever it was.
Plus, you have, you know, UB Tech, USU, you're pulling students out of the main facility. It's just, it's the other things. Superintendent brought up a good point yesterday, like, what does it do to the cafeteria with, you have 2,300 students there? What does it do to your common areas? What does it do to, you know, things like that? We might have classroom capacity, but do we have general capacity? You know, that's, that's something to think about, too. Tony?
Obviously, we're not doing this right now, but if, at the middle school right now, if you did that, you wouldn't have enough room, would you? How much would it have to decline to do that, to make that plan work?
Pretty, pretty significantly. But we also still have a bubble in our upper grades, and so, you know, we, we can project our middle school just based on elementary is going to decline over the next few years.
Would it be enough for that?
We'd probably have to lose at least 200 middle school kids before we could pack them into one building. Because Vernal Middle School, I mean, okay, we, we would, if we did it right now today, you'd take about 300 kids out of Vernal Middle School. They're at 900, give or take, right? So, so then you've got 600 there. We have way more than 300 kids at UNTA Middle School, but if you take the sixth graders out, that takes it down where, yeah, you lose about 100 kids, you could make it work.
Yeah, so you can almost make it work at today's numbers, so.
You, you could, but you'd be really crowded. But in five years from now, if, if our enrollment in the middle level declines another 100 to 150 kids, you, you could do it and remain under capacity. Which would, from a fiscal standpoint, would be a very smart move. But you've got the educational things you've got to think about, too, when making those decisions, right? Sometimes it's hard when you get used to a certain format or having, you know, certain grade levels together, and then going across that grade is difficult, but in, in declining enrollment scenarios, you've got to be willing to make some hard decisions. Which, by the way, also could potentially help with staffing as well, right? We would become more efficient in staffing.
I didn't want to say that out loud.
On a good point, what do you think that we're going to drop about 250 enrollment next year? Is that what we're thinking?
That's, that's the latest that I've seen.
Looking, looking into the crystal ball, who knows? But a few days ago, Ashley Valley Water and Sewer started selling water meters again. So, maybe we'll build some homes. So, like we say, it's all a crystal ball, but we have to think about all these options. So that we can go up or down with whatever happens.
Yeah, we don't want to be caught unawares. We've got to be kind of one step ahead of this as much as we can, so that's our, I guess, are going to be our job over the next several years. All right, so if you don't have any more questions about what's in this deck, we can jump over to the, the actual line items if you, if you'd like. Jump out of this. All right. So, I'm going to make this just as big as I can. I, I realize Excel spreadsheets can be very granular, so we're going to talk about this from a very high level. We'll start right at the top. I've, I've got these organized by school, so we can most easily talk about facilities grouped together for, for that, for that, for that spend. Like I mentioned before, we applied the, I like to call it the razor. We, 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 we did things that were building critical to, to maintain our, our facility and our, our education standard there. And we also did things that are going to be either required now or that we're preparing for the future for our safety mandates, because we have a lot. There are a lot of things that we are constantly looking to do to upgrade our schools in, in terms of safety. And we also have needs, transportation, in our foods, in a lot of different areas. And so, we'll, we'll go through this. We'll start right at the top. AVEC, a couple of things that are going to happen there. We're going to do a door, a door between the hallway and testing center, and we're also going to seal and repaint the, the parking lot at AVEC. Davis Elementary. They are going to need HVAC controls update. And this is, this is a critical need for them. That's going to be just about $300,000. It's a lot of money. Discovery. They need to have their asphalt sealed, cracks sealed, repainted lines, all, all of those things. That's going to cost about $50,000. The district, we have our, our copy machine rotation that we, we do after a certain amount of hours in usage on those machines. Expect to be 35,000. Throughout the district, we are, well, what we are doing here is we are going to salvage, when we, when we get to the point where we move to the new preschool, we are going to salvage the fire control system out of the old central building, and we're going to, we're going to reuse it in another facility here in the district. So, this is just, just the cost of the labor and everything associated with it, but it's going to save us a tremendous amount of money because we don't have to buy an entire fire system that, and I'd waste one that's fairly rare. The next one is a, is one that has changed a little bit since Superintendent, or since President Shivers and, and, or remember Massey last saw it. It's the additional cameras district-wide. We did not have a firm grasp on what the dollars were going to be previously, but last week, a team here at the district, which included Mindy Merrill, one of our directors, went around with a representative from, from Strata, Ricotta, and our, our district camera tech, and went and visited every facility and evaluated every camera in every, every school. And assessed the actual camera. It's, is it the right place? Or is it the right equipment in the right place, doing the right thing? And it drove the cost up quite a bit. This also includes licensing that's going to have to happen. We are on a five-year agreement with them right now. We're in year two right now, so we added three years of licensing into this as well that gets baked into the total project cost.
For the new cameras.
For the new cameras. Are there, are there questions about this? Because Mindy can get up and talk you through them.
Yeah. Do you want us to do them as we have questions, as you go down through, or wait till the end?
Correct. Yes, yeah.
Could we ask, we kind of, we was in not to know. Mindy, can you, the last meeting that we had, we didn't know what cameras we had, what licensing would, and remember, Mindy, me and some of us was in part of them meetings, but the other board members are totally in the dark. So, would you kind of give us a rundown, please?
Yeah, yeah, I would be happy to. So, like Troy said, we, it was Ryan Robinson with Spectra, Keaton Manwaring, myself walked through. I learned so much, so I feel prepared to answer your questions today, much more prepared than previously. One of the first things that we noticed when we walked around is with our previous camera system and the licensing, principals could allocate a certain amount of their funding to install cameras as they wanted. And so, when we came in and did the, the camera system, it was just a rip and replace. Well, when I walked through, I have some schools that have, elementary schools, similar, almost identical floor plans. One school would have 29 cameras, one only had 14. And so, as we walked through and really determined where should camera placement be, it was determined that we should place these in public areas. So, looking down hallways, entrances to buildings, playground areas, cafeterias, and the, and the gyms in those elementaries. It's, it's kind of the rule of thumb. And as we went through and looked at those, some of the schools are very well-covered and may only need a camera or two, where others need 14 or 15 cameras. Part of that cost as well includes the preschool project for the new preschool. We walked through that as well and determined we need 15 cameras there. One of the things that we looked at is, you know, when we, because I said that 30% less coverage, and, and I found out what that means. So, with the typical camera, through the previous system, we had about 128 degrees coverage. With the current cameras, we're down to about 97 degrees. One of the things that we're working with Spectra on is asking if we can maybe get, because we still do still have some licenses and cameras, and we have a whole bunch of vape sensors that are not currently installed, to see if we can maybe sell back or trade in some of those. So, we're in negotiations. So, this number is on the higher end if we did everything that we had asked, realizing that we're still working with to try and bring that number down if we can. The other thing that we, we looked at is, you know, in, on an exterior, sometimes we have a single camera where it makes sense to use what we call a multi-sensor camera, which essentially, especially if we can mount it on a corner, gives us a 360 view of what's going on there. And so, as we looked at repurposing some of that, putting a multi-sensor on some of the exteriors, and then taking the single cameras that are there currently and bringing those into the building and using those elsewhere. So, we, I feel really, really good about the work that we did, very thorough. I feel learning what I've learned and looking at schools differently, learning about, a lot about safety this year, I think this is where we need to be eventually. Now, if we need to split that up, that's something we could consider, absolutely. It does make me a little nervous deciding who gets them and who doesn't. But, but where we need to be, this is a very realistic number of where I think we would have really good camera coverage. And as I worked with principals, they were very understanding that we're not going to cover 100% of your building. They, they knew that and said, these are our high-problem areas, or this is where we're having more incidents and would really like camera coverage. Another example is Vernal Middle School, which is one of our most-used buildings by the community, does not have great camera coverage. So, we don't have camera coverage around the exterior, around the turf farm, coming into the auditorium, those kind of spaces where we'd really like to, to have better camera coverage, both for us and for the community entities that are utilizing those buildings.
Mindy, do you feel like if you went through, and this isn't directed at you, when we bought this system, we thought we was buying what we needed to cover our district. I know you don't have, we talked about crystal balls that we'll, we won't need another camera somewhere, but do you think after we spend this, we'll be back to being pretty well-covered?
I do. I think so. And there may be a, a one-off here or there where we have an incident we find, but, but overall, and I should ask, I mean, Amanda, we've talked about cameras, like, I don't know if there's other principals in this room. But, but I feel like as we went through, we, we did a really thorough job and also said, we're not, we're not going to cut, but this will give us really, really good coverage for the main areas where we need it. And I, I feel pretty confident saying, aside from a random one here or there, that this would get us where we need to be district-wide.
So, does this, excuse me, does this add cameras to the Ag Building then?
The Ag Building has cameras.
They were sufficient.
They're, they're covered well.
They were covered well.
Uh huh.
You mentioned.
Sorry. We had plotted for that, or slotted those cameras in that. So, you said we have 35 licenses still remaining?
Yes. Yeah, that we would, we would use those 35.
So, we're still able to utilize those even though we changed the camera style, or?
Even if we may, even if we change camera style. And again, because realizing this is capital, so we're kind of holding off to see where that will end up, because this money won't actually be available until July 1. But we, if we use our current cameras, then we would use those licenses. If not, we would hold off and start those July 1 with the new cameras. If that's the decision we decide to go with.
You mentioned the vape sensors. Do we still, do we have vape sensors in the middle schools and the high school? You mentioned the vape sensors. Do we still, do we have vape sensors in the middle schools and the high school?
Yes.
In the bathrooms?
Yes.
Thank you.
We, we identified four, we're gonna use four more vape sensors, two in the teen center, and then two, we didn't have them in the bathrooms by the gymnasiums in the high school. And we identified those areas that we would install four more of those vape sensors. But that still leaves us with over thirty that would be on the shelf that we're trying to negotiate and figure out if we wanna use those in, in elementaries or if we wanna try and turn those in.
So, you guys are aware, the, the reason we have those on the shelf is because we originally, when Dean was here, he, he bought vape sensors for all of our schools, including elementary schools. But, we're not, we, we've never been sold on this idea that we really need them at our elementary schools, because we're able to monitor those bathrooms differently than we do the, the middle school and high school. So, so we haven't installed them at the elementary schools. Now, if, you know, if, if it was the, the will of the board to say, "Well, we really think we want them there," we, we could, but we don't seem to have a vape problem at our elementary schools.
So, speaking of vape issues, so, is there a percentage of students that we've bought? As far as prosecuted of any sort?
Let's talk to our secondary principals who probably have those vape sensors go off more often than they'd like on a normal day.
I'm, I'm well aware of, you know, with, with kids in the school, there's, there's, I was well aware of the bathrooms that they vape in, because they, they're pretty smart, and methods to vape without getting caught and those type of things. I'm just curious, you know, and if you have that vape sensor and you don't utilize it, it's of no value. I'm, I'm not cussing you one way, I'm just saying, is, is it something we're gonna utilize or is it something we're not? And what is it? What does it tie us into, legalities and those type of things when we, when we make accusations?
You're gonna have to come up here, Amanda.
Come on. So, it's a process. We do have a lag in those vape sensors. So, it might go off, but we don't get the notification. We get it by email, and it'll be like a minute or two later. And so, somebody will go in there, and then you just kinda have to take that group of kids that are in there, take them to the office, ask the questions, do a search. Sometimes we find it, but like you said, kids are very smart. They know how to get rid of it very quickly before they get to the office.
Yeah, they've, they've learned that process. That's why I'm curious, is, is it of value? I, I've even had some kids that have walked in. Parents tell me they, their kids have walked in, there's been a group vaping, and they, they've been called in. And, or, you know, and to them, that was devastating to get called in for vaping when they just happened to walk in and, and try to walk out.
Right.
And they knew it was there even, but you know they're there. I, I'm just curious. The process of that, Mindy, I just think somehow that time delay has got to, to stop. I, I mean.
I, I also think too, it also is, serves as a preventative measure and a deterrent, because students know that we, we do have that. And so, there has been a decline also of the reported incidents from a time when we didn't have those sensors.
That's good to know.
And so, I think maybe we're not, we're not catching as many kids, but I, I think it's been that deterrent factor as well. I think also, when, when you do have a student that you've pulled in, it, it gives us an opportunity for that educational conversation too, and talking about the risks and the dangers, and letting them know that it's the chemicals that the custodians use to clean the bathrooms that also set it off, and that's how dangerous these are. And so, so like I said, I think it's kind of twofold.
Yeah, I'd love to see us be able to get real time with that of some sort. And I, I don't understand why we can't, you know, on, on that process, and maybe Mindy can investigate that. But then also, the ability to actually, that, that makes it really hard to prosecute it. And, or to even, even if we're gonna prosecute or not prosecute, is just to say, "Hey, you were the one doing it, we know it." You know, and my understanding, there'll be a group of kids using the same vape and they dump it before they leave, and that's just, they're just, they're wise enough to.
Is it possible to have, like, I know, it's probably a pain, but to have someone outside of the bathrooms during passing times?
Oh, we do.
We do, yeah.
The main, the main, yeah, the main one that we know that the kids are utilizing the most, that during passing time, during lunch, before school, after school, there's somebody hanging out there. The problem is male and female bathrooms, if only one of us is there, you know.
Yeah.
Female can't go in the male bathroom, so.
Yeah.
But we are able to catch quite a few. And it is powerful just being able to pull up those emails on your phone, and when the kid's like, "It wasn't me, it wasn't me." Well, you were the only one in here, and I have all of these vape alarms that were going off. And then usually they'll confess and say, "Yeah, it was me."
And I will say, most of the time when, when we talk to students and we just say, "Hey, you know, the alarm went off, we pulled cameras," most of the time they'll just say, "Well, here it is."
Yeah.
You know, and then we, like I said, then that gives us an opportunity to have conversations.
Isn't it amazing the difference in the age group?
Yes. Yeah.
How, how they've learned the processes once they get to high school. Interesting. So, yeah, I, I was just curious, are parents notified?
Yes.
Rob, did you have a question?
I do, while you guys are right there. Just on, on the Mercata, on the cameras. I know, I just, to justify the cost that we put in, I mean, the expense of the whole system anyway. Do you see that? I just wanted to know, your value add and, and are cameras really a great tool? Are you using, utilizing them a lot every day? I mean, just speak to that.
All the time. I, I, to speak to Mindy's point, when we switched over because of the, the settings, I don't, from my understanding, it's not necessarily the cameras, but the settings, we, we've lost quite a bit of, of coverage. And so, you know, we're, we're moving in the right direction with that. But, I, I, cameras are used all the time, every day. And, and not necessarily either when, you know, kids are in trouble or we're trying to find things, but, you know, sometimes it's as easy as somebody forgot their backpack, you know, and, and so, and during community events as well, so. And Vernal PD uses.
Comes by every once in a while.
From things that they capture from the neighborhood.
Ours, it's just, it's very nice to have that coverage, not only in the school, but all of our entrances. The parking lot is a big one, so, somebody backed into my car and they just took off, you know. I, we're pulling camera footage multiple times daily. Yeah.
Those kids out there drifting, we really know who they are.
Yeah, sometimes.
That's a high school.
Todd, kids don't even know what drifting is anymore.
That's true. I think, I think we were sold on the, the program, Mindy, you know, when we purchased it, simply the, the way to track it. So, through, through our discussions, like, we found out maybe the ability to, to utilize it in a way that was meant to be, training, and, and I think some of that's happening, and I think that'll help, hopefully that helps. But the reality is, this doesn't have numbers in it, so it looks like we're adding over seventy cameras or so there.
So, some of that is licensed, the, the specific request for everything is for thirty-two multi-sensors, which are the four cameras that we're putting on the exterior buildings, fifty-two interior cameras, three exteriors, three zoom, one fisheye, and then a cable. Now, again, we're gonna try, that's all of that, right? And so, some of them, we're going to relocate, about, I think, five or ten of those, we're gonna relocate from inside to outside. We're gonna try and repurpose. We're also going to try to, we have thirty cameras on the shelf. If we can, the newer cameras, we can get up to a hundred and sixteen degrees instead of ninety-seven, and they weren't available when we, when we first put this in. So, that wasn't an option. And so, if we can work, if not, we'll put those in, 'cause it's still better than not having one. We still have those thirty that we can put on there. And then some, and then about forty thousand dollars will be covered by, so we took all of that into account when we came up. Troy and I spent, I don't know, it was seven o'clock Friday night, Troy was still here. And, and we came up with these numbers and looked at different scenarios, saying about a hundred and sixty-five. Now, realizing that if we were, we're trading some things, we can bring that cost down a little bit.
So, you guys are looking at real-time footage right there of the small gym that you went to high school? And if you look like at the left side, see how it's cut off? You can't see the whole baseline. The new cameras, you would be able to see the whole baseline, right? So, that's the one limitation, not the baseline, I'm sorry, the sideline on the left-hand side. So, so when we talk about viewable range, that's what we're talking about. Like, when you look at the clarity, that's pretty clear. You can, I mean, the definition is great, right? The picture quality's great. It's, it's just that the, the field of view is a little bit tighter with, with these cameras. And so, so the newer ones that give us a little more would, would be useful. So, that's what we're talking about.
It's the difference of being able to put one camera and cover two hallways versus most of this hallway and a little bit of this hallway. But, yeah, we're trying to be very strategic and smart in how we're placing those.
I think you answered my, the biggest question, was I didn't realize some schools had that, there was that big of a difference.
Huge discrepancies.
When you're doing like-for-like, it didn't, you know, I, from my understanding, there wasn't a self-individual that went school-to-school on the prior.
No, they just, they just replaced. And like I say, it was, that was at principals' discretion. And so, there have been some that have been eliminated, that were not needed. But, for the most part, we've gotta bring all of our schools up to the equity piece of having lots of camera coverage at one school and not another. That creates a lot of extra work. As principals attest, they, they're in these camera systems every single day, multiple times a day.
Well, I'm glad we're using them, so that's.
Yeah. Oh, they're very, definitely. They're used.
Great.
One last question for me, Mindy. Does this price include getting them installed, or will there be another fee for that, or?
There is another fee, but we have a person in-house who can install those at no extra cost to us, so that we did not include installation.
Okay. That's how we did it the first time, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah, and figured the first time, we probably saved between thirty and forty thousand by having our, our camera person install.
Great.
Low K board member?
I think, thank you, Mindy. I think we're ready to go on, Troy. Thank you, Mindy. The next two or three are, are big numbers, but every year, we have a discretionary fund. This is, this is anniversarying what was in there last year. I didn't come up with this number. But we, we, we always need a little bit of money held aside to do special projects that might pop up during the year, or maybe, maybe there's a cost overage or something, and this helps to cover some of those things. Student allocations, we gave this a haircut this year based off of enrollment projections. So, we, we're, we've lowered that from, by about ten thousand dollars year-over-year. We have to pay Duchene County School District every year some money, because we have kids that live in U N A County that go to Duchene County schools. And so, we, we, we spoke to the, the business administrator over in Duchene County, D Miles, and he, he figured it would probably come in somewhere around seven hundred thousand dollars. We'll, we'll have a better idea as we get closer to budget time. Eagleview Elementary, we're, we're planning to do a asphalt upgrade there. Foods department, we need to basically replace or repair the large walk-in cooler in the warehouse. This has been something that's been on the docket for a couple of years, and this is one of those things that works till it doesn't. And we don't wanna be in a situation where we have over a hundred thousand dollars where the food gets spoiled, because it finally gives out, you know, halfway through the school year or whatever. So, that's something that needs to be done. We need to do some electrical breaker work at La Pointe. We need to do an HVAC controls update. Like I said before, these, these run in the high-tos to, to three hundred thousand dollars. Mazer Elementary, we're gonna do a generator switch. It's not a huge expense, but it's, it's needed. Maintenance, we have, this is general maintenance of the district. We need to order some replacement parts for cafeteria tables. As I mentioned earlier, to do a school is like eighty to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for tables, depending on the size of the school. We can buy parts and try to, to fix and repair as much as we possibly can, maybe combine a couple of broken tables, do, do things like that. But if we have the parts, we can, we could fix them up a little bit. We also need to get playground wood chips. This is a, this is a safety must, and we, we replace this on a schedule. We need to do some concrete grinding district-wide. The ground settles, they turn into trip-and-fall hazards, liability issues. So, this is something that we wanna protect the safety of our students and people who use our schools. We need to purchase just some general custodial equipment that's on a, a rotation cycle. We do this every year. Things wear out, and we need to, to change those out. And then, we have four hundred thousand dollars for just general maintenance repairs throughout the district for Donnie. Donnie, would you mind getting up and talking through what we would use that money for?
Yeah, and just maybe that increase, a hundred K.
Increase, is this all? So, the increase is just, we've seen a huge spike in what parts are costing us. Like, two years ago, we could buy a coupler for a circulation pump for sixty dollars. Now, they're costing us two hundred and sixty dollars. So, that's just to kind of offset the inflation. And this is just used to basically maintain the buildings. I use that to buy light bulbs when they burn out, fix small repairs to the HVAC equipment when it goes down. Just anything to keep the building up and running is what that budget's used for. All the work orders that come in, that's the money that pays for those. Want any more detail on that, or is that?
So, I'm just curious, on your light bulb expenses, I know a lot of people are going to an LED, they've got the soft cans that go, that insert into these and are an LED for your power savings. Do we have an estimate of what actual power savings those really, you've installed them in some places?
Some places, I haven't pulled the numbers to see what we're saving. I know we've saved some. We've actually switched to where now, when we replace the bulbs, we can buy a hybrid light bulb that'll do both. And then, once the ballast goes out, we just bypass the wiring from the ballast, and we're still on the LED light bulb. A lot of the cost on our lights is in the ballasts now, but.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking, is it a five-year, is it a ten-year, you know, break-even? Or what is it really, is it?
I think it's about a, yeah, probably about a five. Because right now, even buying the old lights, it costs just about the same amount of money as the LED bulbs.
Great. About it?
Thanks, Donnie. Thank you, Donnie. We're doing a, a, we need to do a sump for the roof drain at Naples. We need to do a generator switch there as well. And then, we're gonna jump into some of our technology costs. We have, these are mostly typical annual costs. Student chrome brick rotation is by far the biggest. It's something that we do every year. We also have intercom updates that need to happen. And then, I wanna call attention to the battery backup for our network cameras. This is actually a cost that's over a hundred thousand dollars, but we're able to get reimbursed for some of this, so that'll hit our, hit our Fund Ten rather than hit here. And, you know, we have to, we only have to pay for about thirty percent of it through this. So, it's a, it's a pretty big savings to us, because we get some funding from other places as well. We need to get some of these intercoms at some of the schools fixed. So, this is what we're estimating it'll cost us to, to get those needed changes. Transportation, we need to do a sump drain in front of the garage doors. We need to do an, an asphalt seal coat repaint. And then, we have the need to replace three Ford Expeditions at U N A High School. Now, this is something that, we're gonna have our, our next White Fleet meeting, March twelfth, I believe. We still have some, we still have some money in Fund Twenty-seven. We're investigating right now whether we can pay for some of this through that Fund Twenty-seven and, or Fund, Fund Ten. Well, it's Account Twenty-seven, sorry. Fund Ten, I'm sorry, I'm using, redact that. Fund Ten, Account Twenty-seven. Where we might be able to pull some of this money out of here and, and pay for it with, with some surplus that we have sitting there right now. So, we'll, we'll know a little bit better after that meeting. We're trying to constantly move towards this strategy of, of updating our White Fleet, so that it becomes a low, low-cost, high-turnover kind of fleet. And so, this is, this is something that's kind of turning into a trend throughout the state, where we don't hang on to vehicles forever, and where, where we can sell them while they still have value. We can buy them on government contracts for, for much less than the typical retail value. And it, I know down in Washington County, for instance, this is anecdotal, but they pretty much get a free White Fleet down there, because they've worked out deals with local car dealers, and they basically turn their vehicles over every two years and get all the maintenance paid for, because they're on warranty. So, it's a, it works out to be a good situation.
Yeah, Troy, you say that, I, I spoke with some of our local dealers, just out of curiosity, why they, why they can't get on the, the state contract, and it's based on volume. And so, not, not any one of the, our local dealers qualify for that volume. And so, I, I would love to purchase from our local dealers, but the state contract, from what I understand, is if they keep the vehicle two to possibly two and a half years, they refund it, and they are able to sell it for the same price they bought it for and purchase a new one, and so that's, it's a. and they are able to sell it for the same price they bought it for and purchase a new one. And so that's, it's a rotation without cost. But we just don't have that option here. So, I mean, we do on the state contract, but we've kept these until they fall apart.
I remember going on a, a trip in high school, and I don't know how we made it to Salt Lake in the station wagon because it was so bad. So we're, we've come a long way since then. U H S, we've got a number of little projects that need to go on. Uh, we need to upgrade the fire system in the team room. We need to do some exterior lighting upgrades. Uh, we need to refinish the gym floor. We need to repaint parking lot lines in the upper parking lot. We need to replace the main breaker to the building. We have our, uh, uh, football, or our uniform rotation, which includes football equipment that we do periodically. And then the big one that I talked about before is the one point three million dollars that we need to spend on replacing the roof over the classroom wing. And as I mentioned, we've been working on this for a few years, working on little sections at a time, but this is, this is one of the big ones right here. We also need to, um, I think that's, yeah, I think that's it for U N A High School. Vernal Middle School, uh, we need to update some exterior lighting. We need to do some, uh, wall padding behind the, uh, the basketball standards of the main gym. It's kind of a safety issue there. Um, we need to replace the kitchen rooftop unit. We need to do something about the, the tiling of the floor out in the, the art building slash shop. Uh, it's buckled up and it's, it's turned into a kind of a safety situation out there. Ashley Elementary, we need to, uh, do some work on pouring some concrete by the flagpole for the bike rack. We also need to do some work around, uh, Dave's Elementary, uh, work on some concrete, removing a strip of grass and putting some cobble rock in there. Uh, Discovery, we need to do a lighting controls upgrade. Need to, um, do a little bit of work at the district office. This is one that we need to, uh, think about as our reception area. We, we would like to do a little bit of work there. It'll provide safety, um, fix. It will make it better and more productive for our, our receptionists that work there, allow them to have separate desks where they can work. It will also, um, they've asked to have a, where they're more at eye level with the people who walk into the building. Because right now, anybody who walks in is looking kind of down at the top of their head, uh, as you get to their desk. And so all these, all these things would be addressed by kind of modifying our reception area. As well, uh, throughout the district, we need to, um, do some, some fencing and, uh, some gates around playgrounds. And this is, this is district-wide correct, Mindy? Yeah. And this is, this is a safety, security issue. At Eagleview, we have, um, some other, uh, projects that need to happen there. We need to do some, we need to shave down, uh, raised asphalt manhole so that it's flat. We need to, um, do some work in the kitchen there, a double stack steam oven. Uh, we need to replace the blue playground. Apparently, a couple of the slides are broken, and they're just not able to, to use them right now. And so it's a safety issue. At Foods, uh, need to do a little bit of exterior painting to, to make the, the exterior of the building look as good as the new, uh, interior that they've got, right, Sherri? A fairly affordable option to keep it looking good and preserving it. At La Pointe, we need to do a little bit of concrete work, not, not a lot. Mazur Elementary, we need to install a fire, a fire roll-down door, uh, in the kitchen. Safety and, and issue there. Um, we need to also fence the bus lane. We had originally, uh, had been requested to repave that entire bus lane. We, we inspected it. We, we feel that we can patch up a pothole there, and we can get a few more years out of it. But we did sell the adjacent lot recently, the district did, so we need to, to get that fenced off. On the one side, we're gonna actually ask the Mazur Water Board to split the cost on the fence. So it's gonna cost about probably approximately twenty thousand dollars per side to do that. So we, we could do the entire thing, both sides, for about thirty thousand dollars. This goes back to our light bulbs question, but, uh, Donnie's asking for some, um, hybrid light bulbs for schools. And then in transportation, we've got a, got to do a little bit of work, um, in our, um, propane sensing upgrades, uh, in a couple of different places, at the shop and in the, in the, um, in La Pointe. And also, we need to, um, make some changes in the propane fueling station. This is a project that's kind of a work in progress right now. We're, we've talked before about potentially moving a couple of our propane buses out to do those west-side routes. The problem that we're running up against, and we discussed this in the finance committee meeting, is that we, we, and in the facilities, we, we don't have the ability to fuel propane buses out there as, as we currently need. So we, we've got the team working on it right now. They've, um, inspected the site. We're trying to determine if, if the large tank out there can be reused, what it's gonna cost to, um, remediate that area around there so that we can actually use it. So this cost might actually change. Mark, would you like to talk to that a little bit?
My name is Mark Rich, Transportation Coordinator. Yeah, uh, we're, we have propane buses here, and we've been able to utilize, I think we've had a good return on investment with the propane buses in our fueling station because we're getting propane at about a dollar fifteen a gallon, and that's been a good savings for us over time. But now, as we've, uh, have gotten our electric buses, we have propane buses that are being displaced, and we wanted to start moving those, those savings out to those other areas in our, in our county. And, uh, we had initially talked about starting that process in Eagleview, but I think we're gonna go ahead and start with La Pointe first. But, uh, they, they have a big tank there right now. Uh, we did take a look at the tank. Uh, I think we're gonna be able to utilize that. We're gonna have to do some update, update, uh, fittings on it, which is gonna cost us about a, estimate of about a thousand dollars. And if we have to move the tank, then there's gonna be about a two thousand dollar charge in doing that. But in looking at it, we're, we're kind of limited in space there at La Pointe, uh, bus garage. And where we have the tank right now, it's a requirement that the propane tank needs to be twenty-five feet from a structure building. Right now, it meets that requirement, but it's not real conducive in getting buses back behind there. So we may have to, uh, remove an old bus garage that's really not being used. It's just a wood structure, as well as, uh, there needs to be some work in the road back behind there. Right now, if we were to have to pull a bus back behind there, it would be a tragedy with the soft earth. We're gonna have to have some compaction and, and different things. So there may be some additional costs with that, uh, in, in being able to retain that tank where it's at and using that, but putting a fueling station. Once we can do that, as well as put a propane censoring and remediation system in the La Pointe garage, in case it senses propane, that would remediate it from the building and not cause a hazard, as well as a couple of things we'd have to do in the garage. We have a furnace that's on the floor. There's also a, a water heater that would need to be relocated. But anyway, uh, the, the cost that we have with the budget was thirty-five thousand dollars, and that was kind of with Eagleview. So there may be some additional costs. There may be some discretionary monies that might be available for that. That's our, our plan, is to start to move those savings of those buses out to the west side of our county, where we've been able to take advantage of that here in Vernal. Uh, but we need to have some infrastructure in place at those garages in order to do that. Does that make me, have any questions?
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Board members, that thirty-five thousand included, have, you know, the, the cost to buy three tanks. So we're not, we're not sure really if it's gonna, it could be under thirty-five to do the work that has to be done on La Pointe. We, we, we can't really pinpoint that right now because, uh, the, the dirt work is, there's gonna be some expense there. I, I, I think we keep thirty-five budgeted there, and if we have to go to, uh, you know, a contingency fund on that, we would. Moving back to U N A High School, uh, we've got a, a few things that need to happen around, uh, the exterior. We got a, a repair fence. Uh, we would like to put some kind of a gate for the upper parking lot entrances. Um, the prior one's broken, and they've currently got a, a chain system in place. It's been tough to make work. We also need to look at putting some kind of a ticket booth outside of the complex. Really simple, uh, but something that would match, be, befitting of our athletic facilities out there. We also need to add some, uh, or replace the backstop padding in the baseball field. Uh, it weathers over the years, and it's at the point now where it needs to be replaced. We also need to do some auditorium house light upgrades. This has been a, um, on the list for a little while, and it, we're at the point where we just need to do it. This is, this is a quote as of a couple of weeks ago. And then we need to do some, uh, uh, large gym lighting upgrades as well. Uh, it's just at the point where it needs to be done. Oh, that's at U N A Middle School. I, I apologize. Yeah, U N A Middle School. I don't have my glasses on today, so. And then finally, uh, we put some money that we earmarked. At, at some point this, this coming year, we are going to need to do demo work on the, the old, um, Central Cove, or the, not the Central Cove, the Central Educational, that's C E C, um, to, to demolish that facility once we, once the new Central Cove preschool becomes operational. And so right now, the five hundred thousand dollars is an estimate. We, we're gonna need to do a little bit of work there to figure out if there's, you know, things that we have to do, such as asbestos remediation, or if there's other hidden costs. But we feel like that that's a, a pretty good number to start with right now. All told, everything on that list adds up to almost six point three million dollars. Some of these things are, like I said, are, are unusual or, or large charges, like this, this five hundred thousand dollars that I just talked about, or the, the roof on the high school, things that we don't do, do frequently. Um, and then there's some other things that we do every single year, like we have a maintenance fund. We have a, we have a discretionary fund. We pay Duchene County and things like that. So, but all, all told, that we are looking at about six point three million dollars, and, and I recommend to the, to the board that we, um, fund these, um, expense requests.
I have one question backing up a little bit.
Sure.
Amanda, I understand the gates, I'm talking about the gates at the, for the upper parking lot at the high school. I understand the need for them. Are we gonna be able to, after we, if we spend the money and get them there, I'm not exactly sure how you're staffing. I don't want it to turn into a job that Amanda does every night on her way after work. So gates are no good unless they're used. Do you feel like we can, we can use them, and it's a good, um, justification of spending, um, the money?
So my initial request, um, when we talked about this, was to have some kind of electronic gate that we could program with their badges, that they could, um, so bus drivers or coaches when they're getting home, because I don't want to go at midnight to let them out of the parking lot, that they could use their badge to scan it, to open it, let the kids get out, and then use their badge to close it again. But I don't.
I've been, um, I've got a lot of experience with gates. The kind that you're talking about is very nice. I ha, I have one of them. Um, after I spent a couple of hundred thousand dollars, then that company disappeared. And so the gate's useless to me now because the software doesn't, and it takes power and software. Maybe something that we wouldn't be willing to do with looking at our budget the way it is this year. But that doesn't mean that we want to spend twenty thousand dollars on gates to leave swung over on the hangar that we're not going to use. Maybe it's something that we need to plan for, for the future. So that was the reason for my, I'm not against the gates. I'm not saying that.
Right, right. And I'm, I'm open for ideas. Like, that was just something that I threw out at that point in time because of the issues that we are having in the parking lot after hours and on the weekend.
When we talked about it in facilities meeting, we just talked about locking it periodically, not on a regular basis. There's a lot of, like, kids coming back on buses, parents are waiting in the parking lot to pick up their kids, they're leaving cars there to drive home. If, if we're locking,
Yeah, that's why.
That would be a problem.
We wanted something that it wouldn't require an actual key to unlock.
But, but what I'm saying is, parents couldn't wait there for the bus to arrive. Where would they park?
We have other parking lots that they could, we would just have to retrain everybody as to where to park and pick up their kids when they're on the late bus.
So, board members, uh, I had a conversation with our sheriff about strategically how, you know, what we should do, and one thing he suggested is that it, it would be useful to have the gates so that when, what happens is, is the parking lot becomes a, a place where kids congregate. And sometimes all you have to do is lock it up for a weekend, or maybe two weekends, and they go someplace else. That's, that's the reality, right? Uh, because their normal place is not regularly available. So what he suggested is have the gates and use them when it becomes a problem, and then leave it open the rest of the time. And now, does that prevent kids from going in there and cutting cookies once? It doesn't, but, but right now, we have no way to close it off and, and to get them to move on. Uh, so, so the, the sheriff, more recently, right, they've, they've upped the patrol, and they're, they're asking people to leave. Uh, so that's why the, the recommendation was, is to get those gates back up and get them functioning. So we have the ability to close it down periodically when we need to. We also identified the need to have some signage up there because law enforcement basically said, we can't enforce what's not posted. Are, are those installed yet, or is that still in process?
I know they're here. Um, we're in the process of getting them, those installed.
Okay, so that's part of your?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Amanda. Any other questions about anything here?
Robin's got something on her mind.
It's my birthday. I can ask, right?
Turn your mic on, and you can ask.
Cutting a cookie? Is that like a donut?
Well, it was when I was a kid growing up in Arizona and Las Vegas. I don't know what it is here. Maybe there's another terminology for it, but I, I don't know what that really is. I just.
Today, they do call it drifting.
Oh, drifting.
Drifting, thank you.
Well, drifting is the new thing. In our day, Robin, it was a cookie. And if Clark never took you on one, shame on him. Oh, you gotta have snow, or else a lot of power.
I did learn moving here, rolling, or rolling coal, that's the name. That was completely out of my.
What's rolling coal?
Diesel smoke.
Oh.
Sorry, I, I digress. Sorry, but I just.
No, it's all good. Robin's never spun a donut.
I, I have.
Drift, drifting nowadays.
I'm glad you knew what it was, at least.
Well, I'm old. Board members, any, any further questions that you have, or discussion on all these items?
Oh, I do.
Um, maybe that, maybe this was on the.
You waited too long, Tonya. I'm just teasing.
Um, now I can't find it. It, maybe it was just on the not recommended. I thought I saw something about, uh, taking tickets by the, uh, stadium. Is that on the recommended list or the not?
Yes, it's a, it's a, it's a request number sixty, um, on the board.
So what is the plan with that at this point?
So I, I just found out about this recently, and we're not gonna do something cheesy out there. Just won't happen. So either we're gonna do nothing, or we're gonna do something that's, that's nice-looking and inviting for public. So I, I'll interject myself in that project. High school doesn't know that yet, but they do now.
The first, the first discussion was, so all the board members know, was talk about a tough shed being put there with a, and, um, we don't think we can make a tough shed at the high school fit-in so that it looks, I'm saying tough shed because everybody knows what that is, but, you know, we don't want a shed that Dave built down at the farm, and we drag up there on the trailer and drag off. And, um, don't laugh, Holly. And, don't laugh, Holly. So, we gotta have something more, we'd rather have nothing than have that. So, the superintendent's jumping in to that one.
So, this number will be different, probably? Okay.
Yeah, and it might, we'll see. It might, if we can't do it for something close, where we have some other funds we can throw in, then we'll just wait until next fiscal year, where we can put a larger sum of money in there and do something right.
Donnie may have to learn to lay brick.
So, we're good.
He can do it.
Any other questions?
Just on the ticket booth. I've been up there helping when they let people in. There needs to be something different, you know. It's, especially when we have a winning season like we did, and it was awesome, but yeah, it was kind of a mess. And if you go to any other school, they have a really good system. And every up there's doing amazing, but there's gotta be a different solution up there.
Yeah, we agree with that, and one option might be to rearrange the fencing, right, and get people right to the back of the bleachers, and do something nice under the bleachers. We already have some space there, but we'll, there's a lot of options. We're gonna go down and take a look at it and see what, what would be good for the long run, right?
Wasn't there an old ticket booth that used to direct traffic towards tennis carts and around? I thought that was what that purpose was for that building, right? I don't know if it just didn't work, or.
Yeah, predates me.
They went down when they built the new complex and the new keeper.
I was gonna say, we used to have one, you'd kind of funnel the traffic down along the side of the tennis courts there, and then you'd come in that way.
That's how we could pay for Amanda's gate. We can just put a gate out on the highway, and you pay to get in.
Pay to get in.
Toll.
Toll fee.
Then there'll be some traffic back up. Then you just need the electronic license plate.
Yeah, they do that on toll roads. They just charge whoever drove in.
They do it at the car wash, too.
Car wash, too. Okay, sorry, I drug us off base. Any other questions, board members?
All right, well, I recommended to the board, then, that we fund $6,256,399. I, on the board memo, and I apologize, I'm calling this, I was off, I mistyped $3,000. I put 259 on the, on this. Now, I want to point out as well, this next year, we are going to be bringing in an estimated $8.8 million of revenue. We've got money coming in from F I L T, we've got money coming in from sales tax, from our property taxes, different sources. So, we will be able to start saving a little bit of money, once again, to start building up our capital fund, to pay for those long-term things that we, that I mentioned earlier.
I was gonna say, yeah, we're earmarking that, so.
Yeah, it's not, this is not money we're spending. We're starting to build, build up to these things that we, that are known and that are coming in future years.
Yeah, we've been in spending mode now for, what, four or five years? And that, we needed to do that. We had a lot of money in that account, but we've done an ag building, we've done this office, we've, you know, purchased the new preschool. There's been quite a few projects that have caused us to spend that down, and, you know, we're still in good shape, right? But it's time to start saving some money, so we can address some of the big maintenance projects we have on the horizon.
Also, board members, for those of you that don't sit in all these meetings, when you get to looking at Troy's future five-year plan, and, and all that stuff, you get to, and we're building the savings account in small increments, you're gonna say, "What are we gonna do in a few years to cover these big costs?" The thing that we've been talking about, that is a possibility for the board, something for you to be thinking about, we got a couple of bonds coming up in the next few years that we're going to pay off. And we would have to go through truth and taxation, but instead of giving that money back to the taxpayer, don't ask for more money from the taxpayer, but keep what we've been getting, even after that debt is paid off, to put in that account to cover these big item things that are coming up over the next five or 10 years. And I probably crucified that, but I want the public to understand what's on our mind, and especially our board members.
Oh, that was well articulated. You said exactly what needs to happen. I'm glad you said it this time, and not me. No, President, that's exactly right, and we want to be very transparent and clear. It would be a tax increase, right? That's why we'd have to go to truth and taxation. But the taxpayer would not see any difference between what they're paying today, and what they would be paying at that time, simply because of those bonds coming due. So, that would be one strategy the board could enact, and that's, that's in, I think, 2027 would be the first one.
Yeah, it'd be 2027 to prepare for 2028.
That's right. And, and so, so there's two. And as we look at the forecast in the future, it would be a good strategy to consider. And that would, that would be taken care of by the board. It wouldn't be on a ballot, it would simply be something the board can do through the truth and taxation process. But we want to make sure the taxpayers know that it is a tax increase, right? Because we've now met the obligation of the bonds they passed years ago. So, we don't, we don't want to, you know, have people feeling like we're trying to do something roundabout. We're not. We're gonna be clear about what it is, and we've been talking about it for a while. So, I think it's good that we do, so that it doesn't shock anybody in 2027, when the board may choose to do this, okay?
And if we don't decide to do that, board members, then we've got to figure out where we're gonna make them kind of cuts, which will cut into every program heavily, in order to maintain, to keep the roofs and the carpet, and to keep their buildings as they are now. There's only so much money to go around. So, anyway, when you get home and you get to thinking about, what, how in the world are we gonna pay the bills then, in three years from now? So, the options for you to be thinking about, and the public also, because we want to be transparent, so everybody knows what exactly is happening. Robin?
And Dave, just to that point, historically, if you look at when you and I got on the board 2019, our capital outlay was 15 million, and we did tax cuts. We've done two or three, I can't remember. So, I mean, we have been.
About $5 million worth, if I'm recalling.
Yeah, and then, one other question, can I just ask one more question?
Sure.
Kind of to Kim, because just, since we've started doing this preliminary approval, and I was trying to find it, but I didn't have enough time today, but from the time that we do the prelim, to the time that we get to the final in June, are we, I mean, I think it's, as I, I don't know if my figures are right, I'm not, anyway. How have we done? Have we got, I mean, it seems like we've gone up.
So, little projects, some.
I mean, so, I'm just curious how we're.
Just 'cause she's retired, she don't feel like she has to follow the rules.
I'm just wondering about if this process is.
I think sometimes it might go up. Sometimes, there's information that happens in this meeting, and they want some changes from the list that we provided. Sometimes, we don't have all the costs in, and then we get a final bid that comes back, and it's like, "Oh, we thought it was gonna be 15, but it's 18." So, sometimes that can make changes. But we're, we're set on, these are the projects we're going to fund, that we want to fund. And then, when we get to that May meeting, and we talk about the budget as a whole, if there's any major changes to what you preliminary, we're gonna be discussing them at that point.
And I know we've amended in the past. I'm just wondering how this process is working.
And this is just preliminary. It's not final until the June. Yep.
So, the goal is, on some of these contracts, Donnie's able to look forward, though, correct? With this preliminary approval? What's that, our reasoning behind doing this?
It would allow Donnie to get started on the bidding process, but we wouldn't spend the money until, until next fiscal year.
But yet.
But we're giving Donnie the authority to move forward with contracts.
And that was the whole reasoning.
So, maybe, maybe we should ask Donnie. Donnie, how's it working, this process?
It actually works good. So, last year, we actually worked in $500,000 for me to start on these projects this year, as soon as they're approved, so that I can bid them and get going on them before June, and then that money will just keep rolling each year, and hopefully, keep that cushion in there, so that we can start them as soon as possible, and not have to wait and try and cram everything in from July 1st to August 20th.
So, that we'll roll over, is that how we see that, then?
Yeah, so whatever we, that we're approving now, that money would stay in there and roll to the next year, so that it's always.
Troy, that's, I guess that's one thing. We just need to earmark that or tag that, so that we know that process.
Absolutely.
We're new, it's just that process, that, the reasoning why is, we were not getting contracts signed, and when we finally got the contract signed, it was 100,000 more than what we had expected, just because of timing, and so that allows us to move forward. But I don't know how you tag it or earmark it to where we know it's a.
I'm new to the government accounting thing, but Kim's gonna come up and talk about this, but we do account for it.
She comes up and talks about this, because she's tracking every project by line, item, how much we spent on it, where we're at, what we, what over and underage we have on each project, when it comes in final, because this is a budget, it's not an actual. So, you know, stuff happens when you're in the middle of a project, and sometimes the price is less, and sometimes it's more, so.
Yeah, just anecdotally, looking over the 2025 budget, where we're at, we've come in lower on a lot of things this year, like tens of thousands on some things, and some things, we've been a little higher. So, it's pretty much balanced out, that we're, I don't, we're not, I'm not anticipating overshooting what we got approved last year, so.
Okay, we need a motion on this, correct?
Okay, board members, if you have no further questions or comments, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to preliminarily approve the capital outlay request listed in the attached spreadsheet in the amount of $6,256,399.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Todd seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I'll give each, Denise, do you have any final thoughts for this meeting?
Just thank you, I mean, that's a lot of work that has got put in, and it takes an amazing team, which we have. So, just thank you for everybody. It's a lot of work.
Todd?
Yes, I know there are some of you out there that already got cuts, and probably going, "Ah, why?" But, I mean, that happens, and it's challenging, and I think it's gonna be more challenging as we go forward. So, it's important that we get what, what we need in these budgets, and hopefully, when we get to this point, even though it's a budget, it's still really close to where we wanted to be. And so, we appreciate you sticking within that budget, and staying, you know, and giving up some of your wants lists. And I think, Troy, you called it, we named it three things. You recall?
Mandatory, mandatory two, and, was it others? Or a version?
I couldn't remember, I was trying to think of what we named them, in order to kind of, those things, and we didn't list as that on here, but when we were looking through those, I know, I think you'd asked that question, of how did we narrow those down? And that process happened outside of us, if that makes sense. And so, we thank you guys for making those cuts and doing those things, so when it comes to us, it's, you've already whittled away some of the stuff that were more of the want list. And I think, you know, I look at, four or five years ago, when I first started this, that want list was huge when we went through it. So, appreciate your efforts. Thank you all, and especially, I join in your department. Thank you. It's good to have you with us.
Birthday girl.
Now that I know what cutting the cookie is. No, ditto to Denise, that's a ton of work, and great job, Troy. And Kelly, thank you, you still color code our over/under, I appreciate that. That's it.
Tonya?
Same as Denise, I just want to thank everybody in this room, because everyone put a lot of work into this, to make this happen. And I know that there are projects that some wanted that aren't happening, and I hope you know that we don't have anything personal against your requests, that we're just trying to do the best we can to set priorities and to be wise, and so, hopefully, next year.
I don't know what I add to that, other than thanks, everyone. This is a humongous job that everybody, that everybody goes through, and nobody got everything that they'd like to have. I guess that's kind of life, but I really appreciate everybody. On the other hand, I haven't had one person pounding the desk, saying, "Why we needed this, why didn't we get that?" It feels like a team effort, like we're all working together, that we all understand there's only so many dollars, and, and so, thanks, I appreciate everyone. Superintendent?
Well, I think the board members, each of you articulated well. I mean, what I would've said, it's just, we got a great team, and, and everyone had to give and take a little bit in the district, and no gnashing of teeth that I saw, at least not until I turned my back the other way, but, no, just kidding. It's, it's all good, so. And then, I want to just thank Troy. You know, Troy spent some long hours, and many of his staff members did as well. Just appreciate the teamwork and the effort. This is gonna be a lot easier for Troy in a year from now, so, thanks, Troy.
I appreciate all the support we've received from both the board and from everybody in this room. I, I could not have done this without a lot of people here working well together. We didn't have any major disagreements. People cooperated, and people were incredibly responsive on getting things, making things happen. So, I really appreciate the work of everybody here, so.
Thank you, Troy. I'd entertain a motion to close. Birthday girl motions that we close, do we have a second?
I'll make a second.
Todd seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
The time is 5:43 PM.